None. Public hearing is closed. We will move into the agenda for the Prattville City Council meeting. First of all, we'll have the pledge of allegiance to our flag, and I will give the invocation. Will you please stand? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me, please. Our dear gracious and heavenly and loving Father, we come to you tonight as humbly as we know how, as elected leaders of this city representing the citizens who voted and put us in these chairs to be decision makers for them. We ask humbly for your wisdom, guidance. We pray for courage to make the right decisions instead and solidly behind the decisions that we make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Miller. Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Okay, we're all accounted for, correct?
I'm here twice.
Dr. Miller's here twice, okay.
That's set for last.
I guess we give you a makeup on that one, right? Okay. We'll call the meeting officially to order. The character trait of the month is thoroughness. Details that influence my quality of work. Gentlemen, you have received copies of the minutes of the public hearing and the City Council meeting of September the 6th, 2011, and the public hearing and the work session of September the 12th, 2011. If there are no amendments or adjustments to these minutes, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Are there any adjustments that need to be made? Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Do I hear a motion? Councilman Fink moves that we approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Argo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. The minutes are officially approved. This time, we will entertain comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anything that you might want to ask us about or make a comment about pertaining to items that are on the agenda tonight, we'll entertain those. Would anyone like to address the council? Mr. Brand.
Monty Brand, 258 Terry Lane.
Good evening, sir.
Yes. I was thinking that one of the things on the agenda tonight would be the proposed budget by the mayor, but I don't see it, but I do see a... Let's see here, where did I see that? Oh, Resolution Number Four about continuing policy procedures and salaries and fixed expenses. So is that addressing the future budget, or is that addressing something else?
That is a measure that we pass as a council to continue the city's operation until a budget is put before the council for consideration and voted into, you know, approval.
Okay.
So this is just a measure, housekeeping measure, to keep the city running and authorizing them, the mayor and department heads, to spend money based on last year's budget.
So does that mean that the budget that was submitted two weeks ago is not being considered tonight?
It's not on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
It is certainly still being studied, considered, and my target date is the second meeting in November. Hopefully, we can get something on the agenda before then.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council on any item on the agenda tonight? Okay. We'll move into the agenda. No, excuse me. We have to have Mayor's report next. Mayor?
We don't have to.
Well, we don't have to, that's true. Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Let me check and see. Yes, I do. First off, I want to declare that I believe that LPGA this last weekend was a success. Had a great turnout by the participants. I mean, the finish was, to me, couldn't be any better. You had the youngest ever for the LPGA to be a winner, right here in our hometown. We got so much great coverage for it. The weather, which I had tasked Drew Peterson and Kelly Cook to take care of the weather, and I think they did a great job with that. So anyway, it's, all in all, I'll declare LPGA was a success this year, and I did see quite a few of you guys working the event, quite a few of the guys enjoying it like I did, and I think everybody was completely satisfied with it, and I have heard no complaints. So I'd like to go ahead and move along. The next thing I'd like to talk about is our creative arts department. They have a skit going on right now. I've already had been there to view this, was a complete works of William Shakespeare. It's not what you expect. My suggestion, my recommendation is, please participate as part of our Quality of Life programs around the city of Prattville. So participate in it if you can. It's going on between September the 15th and then also all the way through October the 2nd. And you can get on our city website and find out exactly what the dates are and the times, and it's a very good little skit. There again, it's not what you might anticipate being William Shakespeare. But moving on along, one other thing I want to compliment the fire department on is that in the very near future, the city of Prattville has to, along with other communities around the state, EMA, some other municipalities, have to reprogram all their narrowband radios, which we're anticipating it to cost the city somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000, which we actually have some of that, some of those dollars in the proposed budget waiting on you guys to present it. But we have been, fire department, Chief Brown, and B.C. Strach have been working and trying to find areas where we can potentially reprogram these radios ourselves. And if that comes, follows through, then I'd say the savings is going to be somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 to the city. And so I should be able to give you an update on that in the very near future. Moving right on along, tonight Relay for Life kickoff is going on as we speak now with the Methodist Church, I believe, so you should see some more advertisement on that in the very near future. September the 24th is also our Worldwide Day of Play, which is pretty much part of the President's programs to get our youth out there and participate in youth sports and pretty much just get out and move around for an hour. And so we're recommending that everybody try to get out to the parks, do some of our exercise, and you get on our city website and be able to find out exactly where our parks are, our walking parks are. We'll help move along with that, and then the canoe trail could also be considered part of that, get out and move. And so please encourage everybody in your districts to move forward with that. The month of October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month. We're going to be trying to promote that throughout the whole month of October, and so you'll see a lot more activities going on with that. October 5th is our Walk to School Day, so you might be seeing quite a few more students walking back and forth to school on that day, so please have everybody aware of that, because we don't want, we want that to run just as smoothly as possible we can. At the next meeting, the next council meeting, I will be requesting that, some funding from this council, because it is in my proposed budget, but I need to move forward with our IT assessment in the budget. It's $7,500 to move forward with that IT assessment. Talking with some IT people, they tell me they expect that potentially they can find at least $200,000 in savings in our IT department. All the numbers that I have really looked at and have been explained to me is that the, our budget for IT is quite a bit higher for other cities of our size. So if you could, if you could go ahead and grant me that, that assessment there, we can move forward and be saving some more money for the city. Also, in HR, I have some funding in it for a paperless direct deposit, but I need approval of $5,813 for that. But we have the possibility of saving over $4,000 a year with that. But there again, I need that approval if we're going to move forward with it and be able to start it close to the beginning of the year. And so if I can get that at the next council meeting. We have recently have had several computer problems without, throughout the city. Fortunately, Doug Mosley, our finance director, has been able to step up to the plate and help us out some there. We have also Joanne Josie and Troy Seaman, who have been helping out in that area, but we do need this assessment to see exactly what dollar savings we have and also potentially save some of these issues that we have, these computers shutting down and not being able to reboot on those. Looking over our budget tonight, I'm sorry, looking over our agenda tonight, not our budget, but looking over our agenda tonight, and at our last council, I asked that you guys either vote down or table indefinitely our Resolution Number One, which is, talks about our health care and freezing the cost on that. Where I commend Councilman Fink for bringing this to the table and trying to hold the cost down for the employees, and it was, his intentions were honorable. If you do freeze these, you're actually taking away one of my tools. You know, since I've stepped up here as mayor, I've asked for the three Ts, and the three Ts are the time, the talent, and the tools. And one reason why I'm saying this is one of the tools is that if we go with the employee committee's recommendation, going up $25, and then if we piggyback off of that also a $25 discount if the employees go through the health risk assessment on it, then we potentially, in the long run, will have a savings through our insurance account there. So please, either vote this down or table it, and do not take this tool away from me. It is very important that we do have healthy employees. Right now, I think we're, out of all the employees that we have, I think that we're just, just under 100 that have still not gone through this. So we have had more and more of them to step up the plate and do this, but without this little bit of leverage, without this tool, then I feel like that we will be doing them, being doing the, the employees a disservice. So please, either vote this down or table it indefinitely. Also, on Resolution Four, since we do not have a budget presented here tonight, we do need to move forward on that. But, and also on Resolution Number Five, the, I recommend that we move forward on that also, because as we all know, there's not too far along, we're going to be having an election cycle, and it's going to just be an overwhelming task for one person, whereas Stephanie Southern is highly qualified and a very hard worker, it's just too much for one person there. So if you can move forward with that and these other items that I've mentioned, I'll bring you some more information, so hopefully we can get those on the agenda for next council meeting. Besides that, that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions of our mayor? Councilman Fink?
Yes, Mayor. On Resolution Number One, do you have, not to get into any names or anything like that, obviously, but do you have, have the health risk assessments that we've been done? Have we, have we been able to maybe head off a potential medical problem that an employee might have had? And not, not specifics, but have we run into some where that it has truly served to be beneficial to help somebody in the long run avoid a possible more serious medical condition later?
Most certainly. I could, without going into any details, I know of at least three with just one, with one medical issue that was discovered well in advance of where it could have been devastating to them, their family, but in the long run, I truly believe it would be a savings to the city to have the healthiest employees that we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have the report on the status of the city's financing, or finances, by Mr. Mosley.
Provided everybody with a revenue summary and an expense summary, just as every month I do. I've got, it's pretty much the same story as it has been the last several months. We're running about $3.1 million more in revenue right now than we were at last year, which is a very good thing. A couple of, you'll notice a couple of the items are kind of lagging behind. Permits and inspections, obviously, with building not, you know, people not building as much, permits inspections are going to be down. Pretty much everything is right on track. We have the August revenue that's going to be coming in, that'll be for the 2010, 2011 year, the September, and for most accounts, we'll also have October. So we actually have two more months on top of this that will go into revenue. So I think we're doing very, very well. As you can see, for most accounts, we're 83.33% through the year, and we're at 90% of budget total. So that's very good news. On the expense side, same departments have the same issues. I'll go through them again. You'll notice on salaries for the executive department, they are at 100% of budget. That's due to the restructuring, moving the webmaster into that department halfway through the year. You'll also see operating expenses over budget that is due to some of the liability insurance costs, as well as the difference in the travel allowance that's built into that department. Finance department, you'll notice that the operating is over budget. Again, that is due to insurance, as well as the audit fee that was underbudgeted. City clerk, same situation, insurance on the operating. Judicial is over budget in operating due primarily to the jail contract, the way it was budgeted. The full amount is in the budget, it's just split out a different way. IT is over budget in operations. That's primarily due to the telephone and internet costs. Those all have been addressed in the new budget to reflect accurate numbers. Engineering salaries and benefits is over budget due to restructuring. As you know, the majority of the street department was moved into that department. Planning department, the operations cost is a little bit over budget. That is primarily due to utility costs. Sanitation departments, the operations budget is a little bit over budget. That is primarily due to fuel costs being underbudgeted. And police, same problem with fuel costs being underbudgeted. If you, bottom line, if you look at it, total year-to-date, we have spent 33, oh, sorry, 34.3 million. Budget is 34. Of course, that's going to be increased some, but due to the bridge loans being in there. Brass tax, if you look at total in, because I do not have debt proceeds on the revenue side, because I didn't want it to inflate the number, and because we're borrowing because of the bridge loans. If you look at brass tax, the total in so far this year has been $35.7 million, and the total out is $34.5 million. So we have brought in $1.2 million more than we have spent. So I think that's a vast improvement from where we were a year ago today.
Any questions of Mr. Mosley? Councilman Bowles?
You know I love beating a dead horse. I just want to point out again, it looks as if you go to the very bottom of the page, the very last figure, have we underspent $6,300,000 from last year?
Yes.
That is, so I'm reading that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Our salaries are $1,200,000 less this year than last year?
That's correct.
Our benefits are $600,000 less this year than last year?
That's correct.
Our operating costs are $2,300,000 less this year than that last year? Our capital outlay is $2,300,000 less than last year?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to point that out, because a lot of times, you don't get this in the newspaper. You won't see it in the local newspapers, you won't see it on the local TVs. So I'd like to try to get this information out the best I can, and this is the only way I can, by asking this question every month. I really appreciate all the hard work you're doing, and the finance committee, and the employees. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Mosley? Councilman Striplin?
I assume that we probably incurred some overtime this month. Will it be paid next month before the end of the year?
Yes, it will be. All overtime that's been incurred will be paid out before the end of the year.
Okay. And there are two payrolls in the...
In September, two payrolls, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And you mentioned $35 million in revenue?
That's total funds coming in. That includes bridge loans and everything else.
Oh, okay.
Because we have the, you know, where we paid off the bridge loans is in the expense side, but, you know, that is not in the revenue. Because I didn't want, I didn't want to over, because it's not true revenue, it's a transfer in. It's other financing source. I didn't want to confuse the issue.
It confused me.
Sorry.
Councilman Argo?
Mr. Mosley, I think Mr. Striplin just made a very good point about being confused, and I think that's one of the reasons why the general public is having a hard time following our budget issues. We have brought in $35.7 million total revenue, but as Mr. Bowles has pointed out, we've spent $6.3 million less. You said at the beginning that we're about $3.1 million ahead to where we were last year. You've lost me already. And that's one of the reasons why people are having a difficult understanding of where we are with our budget. I would encourage you to find a simple way to say, X number is brought in, X number has been spent, X number has been put in reserve. Because I do know that we still owe some money. There are some people that have not been paid that we owe money to, and if we're underspending $6.3 million, we're $3.1 million ahead, then I don't see any reason why we're not paying those bills.
Can I come?
Go ahead.
Well, part of the equation is the fact that we started off, you know, the year with over $3 million in accounts payable. That, that's not in these expense numbers, because those were prior year expenses.
Right.
So it kind of confuses the issue, because we're not on a cash basis.
And...
But I completely understand what you, I understand.
I was going to say, we just need to find a simple way of trying to explain a very complicated budget, so that we're not sitting up here confused. I was also approached by a member of the Chamber of Commerce that apparently we still owe some money for some billboards. Are we looking at paying that anytime soon?
That is in the budget for this next, this next year.
All of it's in the budget?
I think 10...
Yeah, my proposed budget, I had $10,000 in there, which, there again, it can be debated whether we actually owe that or not. They had signed a contract, they, being the Chamber of Commerce, had signed a contract with the billboard people, but it had been an agreement, gentleman's agreement, or whatever you want to call it, with the prior administration. Personally, I told them I was going to do the best I could to make them whole, not all at one time, though. Legally, we don't owe it, but I think morally, we do. But for next, in the, in the budget, unless it's, it's in your hands, pretty much speak now. But if, it is $10,000 in there now, and it can be adjusted.
I guess it's just a philosophical difference. I, I realize $40,000 is a lot of money, but in a $35 million budget, $40,000 is not a lot. Why don't we just go ahead and pay it and get it off the books? And, and I agree with you. Legally, we are not responsible, but we all know we owe that money. That was the agreement we've had with RSA since 1996. So let's just go ahead and pay it and be done with it, and get that off our books. And anyway, that's just my, my take on it. But thank you for putting in your budget for this next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Mosley? I mean, are you through?
Yes.
Mr. Argo? Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Mosley? Councilman Bowles?
On the chamber money, I would strongly recommend, I agree with Dean, we need to clean that up. I've heard this going on for year after year after year about this money we owe. We always put $150,000 or whatever in there for economic development. I would make the recommendation, when y'all revise the budget, pull it down to 110. Economic development, $40,000 for the signs, and let's get this off the books. Okay? And then it don't cost us any more money. We give $150 every year, anyway.
Well, one comment that I do to make is that this was monies that were, I mean, it's not like this $40-something thousand has been owed for quite some time. This $40-something thousand is just pretty much, it was not in last year's budget. It has been in previous year's budgets, but not technically the budget we're working out of now. But it is, I did put it back in for the next year's budget. So it's not like this has been a long-going, an ongoing bill. It's just been a reoccurring bill. Thank you.
I know the council does not need to be reminded, but just to refresh your memory, the mayor has presented his proposed budget. Any revisions and approval now lies in the hands of the council. So when you start talking to the mayor and the finance director about doing this and doing that with the money, that burden lies on us now. So as we start debating our, the revisions to the budget, and before we get ready to propose a budget for consideration and approval, then we need to, as a council, consider those concerns. I just pass that along to you. Councilman Fink?
Yeah, I just want to, for point of clarification, because you mentioned the previous administration. It was an agreement between them. If, if memory serves me correctly, I just want to make sure it's correct, so people don't think it was the previous, it was a previous administration, which was when Mayor Whitstone was the mayor, not when Mayor Byard was the mayor.
Correct. I believe Whitstone was the mayor at the time, and, and thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Going to reports from the council on special committees, Councilman Striplin?
No report.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number three, which Public Safety Committee did have an opportunity to meet on this item, and it's going to be our position to move forward with approval at the appropriate time, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Argo?
No, sir.
Councilman Miller?
Fire committee has not met since last I reported, but Chief Brown tells me that the conversations and ongoing discussions with the county about the ambulance contractor moving along nicely, and he's got a meeting tomorrow actually on that topic, and hopefully they'll continue to move in the right direction, from our perspective at least.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, I do have a resolution coming from the floor. Each of you should have a copy of it, and it is to waive the fee for the Otoga County Fair Association. This is a, a standard thing that we've done for a number of years, at least I know the seven years I've been up here, and I would just ask that you support this. We just did not, the fair president there, Gene Hall, did not get with me in time for me to get it on the Wednesday agenda, so I apologize. I would appreciate your support, and this is the only meeting we can do this before the fair is actually here.
From the finance side of the city council, let me just say that we are working diligently, considering the mayor's proposed budget. We're talking about concerns and possible revisions to the budget. The target date to have a budget on the agenda for consideration would be no later than the second meeting in November, but it is my fondest desire to have a budget on the agenda before this council for consideration, long before that. This time, we'll go... This time, we'll go into the agenda. The first is a resolution to declare a freeze on employee health care premium contributions sponsored by Council President Pro Tem Fink. It's held from July 19th and September 6, 2011 meetings. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Councilman Fink?
Yes, I would actually like to propose that we postpone this indefinitely. I've had lengthy talks with Lisa Thrash with HR as well as the mayor. The intent is obviously not to have any additional expense by way of this $25 premium increase to the employees come January 1, and I'm convinced that with the health risk assessment being a part of this, that this addresses that $25, that fee will not be imposed upon completion of the health risk assessment. I've talked with Ms. Thrash about what is involved with the health risk assessment, and it's very minimal, and I do think that the benefits of what the mayor has said to us in the early detection far outweighs any downside to this, so I would offer to postpone this indefinitely.
Councilman Fink has moved to postpone of this resolution indefinitely. Is there a second to this move, motion for postponement?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on the move to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. Resolution one is postponed indefinitely. Resolution number two, to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
With the council's indulgence, I'd like to just read the title and the addresses. Is that all right, Mr. McDowell? To declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Addresses are 111 Diane Drive, 820 Dunn-Vegon Drive, 1698 Hawthorne Lane, 761 North Court Street, 106 Seventh Street, 1264 Upper Kingston Road, vacant property northeast corner of Trolley Road, 317 West Sixth Street, 655 Thomas Avenue, 113 Walker Street. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second? Councilman Fink, second to that. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution to grant a retail, a restaurant retail liquor license for George Harvey Russell, owner doing business as The Cafe LLC. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas George Harvey Russell, owner doing business as The Cafe LLC, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license, and the business located at 143 North Memorial Drive, Prattville, Alabama, 36067, which is a restaurant, and whereas said license will be a new application, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to George Harvey Russell, owner doing business as The Cafe LLC. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution. Resolution number three, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? I see none. This resolution is adopted. Item number four is a resolution appropriating fixed expenses and salaries and continuing policy procedures. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the fiscal year of 2011, 2012 budget is still being formulated, and whereas the city must continue to perform necessary functions and provide services until the budget is approved, now therefore be it resolved that all fixed expenses, namely, but not limited to utilities, insurance costs, normal and necessary operational costs, supplies, maintenance, and other items for usual and necessary operations be the same, is hereby appropriated and authorized for expenditures until further action of this council or the budget is approved. Be it further resolved that all salaries are authorized for payment until further action of this council or the approval of the budget. It is further resolved that all ordinances, resolutions, procedures, and policies are hereby ratified and affirmed and ordered to continue on a temporary basis unless and specifically until such time as any of these items are specifically amended, changed, repealed, or altered by this council. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to authorize the Human Resources Department to begin the hiring process for an assistant to the city clerk. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Prattville Assistant to the City Clerk Stephanie J. Sutherland was promoted to city clerk on August 2, 2011, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas to ensure the effectiveness of the city clerk department, a permanent assistance needed to be placed in, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resource Department is hereby authorized to begin hiring process for assistant to the city clerk. The process shall not be filled until November 1, 2011 or later. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Miller?
And this is a question for the mayor. I know you've done a lot of efficiency sort of maneuvers in the city staff and some cross training and so on and so forth, but is that an option here instead of bringing on a new
My opinion, excuse me, my opinion is not, especially with the upcoming election, we need somebody full-time, and there again, there is also a possibility that this position might be able to be filled from within. Now, does that mean that the, if it is filled from within, will that mean that we might have to come back to you and ask for another position to be filled from without, you know, from outside? That is part of the, you know, the scenario there, but there again, we might be able to fill it from within and then not be able to actually bring on a new personnel.
And the second part of my question, and you alluded to this, is the upcoming election, and I know that puts an extra burden on the city clerk, but given that that is a temporary window of time, election's just under a year away, is it a consideration that you perhaps look at a contract or short-term employees, something short of bringing a employee on board and the costs that are attendant to that?
There again, my opinion, as we mentioned, talking earlier about the election, if that's not handled properly, somebody can actually go to jail. If we were to hire somebody from outside temporarily, you know, it, we don't know really what their qualifications would be. Long-term, I think it's the best interest of the city to have an assistant clerk, and that way it's, it actually makes the mayor's office a little more efficient also because there are times because of illness, vacations, holidays, stuff like that, that the phones are ringing and we need one more set of ears and hands around the mayor's outer office there just to help it run a little more efficiently. And we are doing some cross-training in some other areas that will pay dividends, but in this particular area, I think that somebody who's highly trained is what needs to be filled and not just cross-training.
Thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Vote is 6-1 in favor, and the resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution number six is to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement. Addresses are 2707 Winfrey Drive, 2711 Winfrey Drive, 2506 Wingate Drive, and 2528 Wingate Drive. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed addresses be and are a public nuisance. The owners of said property, as they appear in the records of Ottega County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, and the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council and the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on October 18, 2011, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Councilman Fink, I believe you have a resolution you want to bring from the floor.
Yes, this is a resolution to waive the fee for the Ottega County Fair Association. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the license fee imposed by the City of Prattville Code, Section 38-322, is hereby waived for the Ottega County Fair and all related concessions and games, et cetera, to be operated under the auspices of the Ottega County Fair Association to be held at Matt Gray Park on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive during the week of October 4 through October 8, 2011. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. In order for us to consider this, the rules will need to be suspended. If they are not, it will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting. So move. Councilman Wood moves for the suspension of the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The rules are suspended, and the resolution is properly before us. Is there any questions or comments about this proposed resolution? Councilman Miller?
I fully support this, and I have year in, year out while I've been on the council, but I've never asked the question, how much money does this actually represent that we're $250?
$250.
Thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Resolution is passed and approved. That exhausts our agenda unless there's something else to come before the council from the, from the city council? Anything else? Okay, we will open up the floor now for comments from persons present on anything that you would like to discuss with the city council tonight. Is there anyone present that would like to bring problem, concern, issue, compliment before the city council tonight? See no hands raised, so we'll move forward to closing comments from the mayor.
Hope to see everybody at the fair.
Councilman Striplin?
Briefly, I continue to express appreciation to the city employees. The work that they do is unbelievable in seeing how they're able to stretch a dollar and make things work. I'm truly appreciative. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to comment on the resolution that we've just passed on item five. We all are aware that we do have an election in August of 2012, and that is a very important issue, but I want to strongly encourage the administration, and I've talked about this before, we're in a phase of supposed to be hiring freeze, but we do need a person to fill in here. I strongly encourage the administration to try to hire someone from within whereby we can cross-train that person not only to work as an assistant city clerk, but also maybe in a position in the executive branch or somewhere else, and hopefully still not have to hire another person. We may have to do so, but everybody know the restraints that we're upon them, that the election is only for one year, so that person would do a lot of work concerning the election process, but after that, she still has a load to carry. So I strongly encourage you to hire someone from within, if possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Follow along that same line. I want to remind everyone that, I don't think I need to do that, but I'm going to do it anyway. The city clerk does so much more than handle city council meetings and elections every four years. The city clerk is responsible for handling all insurance claims against the city, and trust me, there are numerous claims against the city on a daily basis. She is also the only one in the city that can authenticate the mayor's signature, so if she is out and there needs to be a signature authenticated, then that puts the city at risk. So I firmly agree that we need to have someone that's going to be her backup, that's going to be able to handle things when she's not available. I also agree with Mr. Wood that hiring somebody from within would allow us to cross-train at a much faster pace and also allow that person to help out other places in the city. So I'm glad we were able to do that this evening. Second thing I want to say, how much I enjoyed the LPGA this past week. We had, we had a little mix of cool weather and some beautiful sunshine. I did have an opportunity to talk with several of the Bruno event team and LPGA officials. They are absolutely just ecstatic with the way that this community turns out. Also, the city of Montgomery and other surrounding communities as well, the way that we handle ourselves, the way that we treat the players. One of the players that I've been able to talk to for four years in a row, she tells me that the golf course doesn't set up well for her. She doesn't like to play the golf course, but she comes back because of the way she's treated by the community, and I think that speaks volumes for the way that we handle the LPGA, and I hope that we can continue to do that in years past. And thirdly, I want to tell everyone how much I appreciate the expressions of sympathy, the loss of my uncle night before last, my last uncle. That means I'm getting old, too, but I want to tell everyone how much I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
And I understand the discussion and points and pros and cons around the city clerk and assistant city clerk, and I think most folks know that I have a real, real appreciation for what Ms. Sutherland does and how she stepped up to the plate, you know, with Gina Smith's resignation, and is just as an awesome job as do all the other city employees. So it's certainly not a personal thing, but I guess I echo Councilman Wood's sentiment that we are still, we are still under the gun in terms of balancing revenues and expenditures, and human resource costs are one of the main costs. So I likewise, given that this passed, would second the encouragement that you look within and recruit from within, whether it's a full-time person that cross-trains partially or totally, or it's two or three people that take on different pieces of the job duties that you've got, you know, in mind for this assistant city clerk, but sort of think outside the box, and at the end of the day, to me, you've been successful if you don't backfill and create a totally new employee hire in this effort. So I would encourage you, if at all possible, to look towards doing that. look towards doing that.
Councilman Bowes?
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the work that was put in for the LPGA. We get the fun side of it, we get to walk around with our little name tags on and look pretty, and you guys are doing the work, and it was outstanding. I had the pleasure of working it on Sunday, but I was there every day but Saturday, and all the employees did a wonderful job, from the firemen, policemen, picking up the garbage, the grounds, everything y'all did was magnificent, and hats off to y'all, and thank you very much, brother.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, I guess, there's seven of us up here, so I guess all of us get to offer an opinion, mayor, on, I, I definitely, you know, reinforce, I guess, the sentiment that we should hire that position from within, if at all possible, and, and, and I contend that it's not a, it's not a, I don't view that position as something that is a part-time position. It is a full-time position, both positions, assistant and clerk are, in my opinion, more than 40 hours a week position, so it, it needs to be somebody, in my opinion, that's in that position full-time. And I did want to let my colleagues on the council here know that I have a, I have an obligation that is going to require me to be actually in Huntsville October 4th, which is our next meeting, so I will not be in attendance at the next meeting.
We have, Chamber of Commerce has their annual banquet Thursday night of this week. If you have not purchased your tickets, you, they can be purchased at the Chamber of Commerce building, just down the street. They're $40 per seat. Encourage anyone who can and would like to, to please come and join us at this Chamber of Banquet. We have an excellent young champion for our LPGA Navistar tournament in Lexie Thompson. I had an opportunity to meet she and her father. They're class people. She picked up a first-place check of $195,000, and for a 16-year-old, that's a lot of money. For a 63-year-old, that's a lot of money. She immediately contributed $20,000 for winnings to the Wounded Warrior Project, which is an excellent project. Being a combat veteran myself, I appreciate that, and a lot of money was raised for that worthwhile organization. Our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting, is on Tuesday, October the 4th, 2011, 6:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. That being said, if there's no other business, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.